Welcome, everyone, to the zoning board of adjustment meeting for July 20th. Could I get a roll call vote? Andre? Paul Tibideff?
I'm here.
Thank you. Cheryl Huggins?
George Bailey, President.
And Tracy Hardikoff, thank you, guys. And I have you, those that would like to participate, please stand and let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
No? Up tonight is a continued item, 12130 GR 22. Adrian Ford, variance, owner, Richard Townsend.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This morning from Mr. Townsend and his representative, surveyor, they have not yet heard from the attorney in dispute of the property line, so he asked to continue.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to continue case number 12130 GR 22 variance of Mr. Townsend.
Okay, and could I get a roll call vote, please?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Oh.
We have the continuance of the date.
Our next hearing should be August?
17th, or 17th, I believe?
Yes. Yeah. Before we do that, as chairperson of the ZBA, I would like to move alternate Andre La Prad. Go ahead, just pronounce your last name for me again.
La Prad.
La Prad. Mr. La Prad, from an alternate member to a regular voting member tonight, could I please ask for a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you.
You can vote on it.
Is that what our current bylaws read? That's what our new bylaws read, but is that what our current bylaw?
Yes.
Okay, then I will do that. I have appointed Andre as a regular voting member tonight, thank you. So continuance. George, can you amend your motion to continue to the?
August 17th at 10:00?
August 17th, meeting at 10:00 p.m.
An amendment to continue this meeting to August 17, 2022.
Second on that? Thank you. And roll call vote, please, beginning at the end of the table, Mr.?
Bailey, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye, thank you. Okay. Next before us is item number 21756 NR 22. The applicant is seeking a variance. Do we have the Jones representatives here, by there? Jones are requesting a variance from Article 4, Section 411, Table 2, to allow for a setback from the side of the lot, 21 feet inches, 30 feet is required on a 2.0 acre lot to build a 24 by 28 acre garage, map 17, Lot 56, at 635 Scranton Pond Road in the neighborhood residential zoning district.
Thank you, good evening, Chair and members of the board. Brett Allard with Shaughnessy Raish, Representative for the landowner, Kelly Jones. I do have some extra copies of the survey and the proposed garage plan if anyone needs it, and I also have only one copy that I just received, but an elevation, if anyone would like to see that as well.
I would like, sure.
Okay, yes. Can you just state the basis for the variance for us, that would be helpful?
Yep. So as you stated, this is 635 Scranton Pond Road, tax part 21756 in the neighborhood residential district. The property is approximately 0.4 acres and is an improved with a single-family home and cave drive by, it's served by an existing well, septic, and there is no existing garage on the property at this time. What we're proposing is a two-car garage at the end of the driveway, adjacent to the house. So given the location of the existing driveway and the house relative to that 30-foot side setback, there's really no feasible way to construct even what we're proposing as a modestly-sized garage on this property without encroaching in that side setback to some degree. But there is a dense wooded buffer there in that area to west and to the south of that proposed garage area and the setback area that will contain a natural buffer and sightlines into the property for that area. So what we're requesting tonight is a variance from Article 4.1.1, Table 2 of the zoning that the construction garage approximately 21.8 feet from the side lot line where 30 feet is required. So I'll just go through the variance criteria. Number one, granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. To be contrary to public interest, the proposal has to conflict with the ordinance so much that it violates basic zoning objectives. We don't think that it does here. The relevant test are whether the proposal would alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten public health and safety. There won't be any essential alteration of the essential character of the neighborhood if this variance is granted. I would say most, if not other prop, all, most if not, I'd say 75% at least of other properties in this neighborhood have garages already, so this is, proposal is consistent with that character of the area, the single-family residential nature of the neighborhood. Certainly, there won't be any threat to public health or safety, and no increase in traffic would be generated by the. Number two, granting the variance will be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance in terms of side setbacks is really a mechanism to avoid overcrowding and congested development, and we don't think that's an issue here. We're only seeking to encroach 8.2 feet into the side setback, so 21.8 feet will remain to the property line, and within and beyond that, again, we have that dense wooded buffer. And even if there was no, this really is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance because garages are allowed by right in this zoning district, and as I said, very common in neighborhoods, so we do think the proposal is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Three, granting the variance would do substantial justice. As this board knows, that requires the balancing test between public and private rights, and the Supreme Court's held that perhaps the only guiding rule is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. We don't believe there's any injury to the public if these, if the variance is granted. There would really be loss to the applicant if the variance is denied because they would be deprived of the ability to maintain a garage on their property and all the benefits that come with that benefit of being a property owner. Given the character of the neighborhood, the garage is appropriate for the area, and granting variances for improvements that are appropriate for the area does substantial justice, so we think this would address that. Four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. Again, the property will remain consistent with the residential nature of the area, such that will be no adverse impact on surrounding property values. We do have that substantial distance still to the property line, even much further than that till you get to adjacent residences, and it's all thickly wooded in there. So we do have a significant distance between the proposed garage and adjacent homes and driveways, and the board will see in its packet that we've submitted letter from Michael Whitney of Keller Williams. Very brief, so I'll just read it into the record real quick. This is dated February 13, 2022, and says, "In reference to your plan to expand with proposed garage, I do not see any issues or impact that it will have on values of abutters. I look at this from my professional opinion as a plus to your property as well as surrounding abutters. The proposed garage will enhance the value of your property and in return be a plus for surrounding abutters. I do not see any impact that would have in value or aesthetic for the abutters. I've looked at comparable situations, and it has not had any negative impact." And that's from, again, Michael Whitney at Keller Williams. Last but not least, unnecessary hardship. We do believe that this property has special conditions that distinguish it from other properties in the area. If you look at the survey, if you look at the tax map that we, snapshot that we submitted that shows those other properties in the area, this is really a wide, shallow lot compared to other properties in the area, has more than double the road frontage of most other properties in the area, but about half the depth of most other properties in the area. And the existing dwelling is situated all the way on the westerly side of the building envelope, within the building envelope, but all the way on the westerly side, and then the existing driveway is situated west of that, partially within that side setback already. So if you look at the nature of the property, the location of the existing improvements, there really is no feasible way to construct a garage on this property without proposing a side setback approachment to some degree. Even so, we've tried to keep it a modest proposal, a two-car garage at 24 by 28 feet. It's within the building height set forth in the ordinance, there's really nowhere else to put it, and that is the inherent hardship in this application and relative to this property. So owing to those special conditions, we don't believe there is a fair and substantial relationship here between the purpose and application of the side setback requirements. Again, there's really nowhere else to put it, but the lot can support the garage without implicating any overcrowding or congested development. Most other properties in the area do have garages, we're still maintaining 21.8 feet to the side lot line. So, you know, for all these reasons, we think that the purpose is that the zoning ordinance seeks to, the harms that the zoning ordinance seeks to protect against aren't threatened if the variance is. So for all those reasons, we believe the proposed use is reasonable, and again, garages are permitted by right accessory uses in this, in this zone, and we believe that the, it's a good plan and, you know, per se reasonable under those circumstances. So that's what I have for the five criteria, and I'd be happy to turn to the board for questions.
Does anyone on the ZBA have questions in reference to the application? Okay, go ahead, Vice Chair Bailey.
Thank you very much. Sir, thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it. Question to you is, have you considered any other location on this piece of property for that garage? And if so, where?
It was considered.
Just a question.
It was considered in the design phase, but in order to, there's no, there's nowhere else to put it because if you, not that you would put a garage directly in front of your house in between the road and the garage, but even if you wanted to do that, there's a well right there, so we can't put it there. The existing driveway is where it is, that can't reasonably be moved, so that between the location of the existing well, the location of the house being all the way up against the westerly building envelope, and the location of the driveway already being partially within side setback, there's just nowhere else to put it, and that really is the crux of our hardship.
Yes, go ahead, Mr.?
With the driveway located where it is, I assume the floor, there's the entrance, so that's practically where a garage would go.
Right.
Right? Okay.
I was going to ask if there's anyone here to testify in opposition to the variance.
There is, okay.
Yep, go ahead. Okay.
We need to come up to the computer and the microphone up here and put your name and address to the record.
Oh, yeah, excellent. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yep, Kevin Schmidt, 647 Scranton Pond Road.
647. Could I ask you, we have, I have a visual, can I just ask you to point out for the ZBA, middle of this map?
There's a, our driveway is paved and the first part of it is shared, so I don't know if that's on that picture or not.
Okay, so I'm assuming you're speaking of this, would you like to come double-check that, or?
Sure. I'm assuming it is the abutting property that you're speaking of.
This, this is the abutting property.
This is.
Madam Chair, you seem to have muted yourself.
I could only speak to the fact that the town residents for the town of Barrington had voted in that distance in a zoning ordinance, and the purpose of this quasi-judicial board is to be able to dissect hardships that may occur and to provide relief when needed. So, go ahead, your reason for opposition.
Another question, is that zone to protect the abutters, or is it just what you said?
It is just what I just said. Go ahead, testify to opposition to the variance.
That man made some good points, but it's not really densely wooded, said that a few times. I can see building. I just don't want it, don't want it that close.
Okay. Is there, is there any other fact that you'd like to testify to in reference to the opposition?
They're in, engines roaring all the time, guns going off.
I was, I guess, I'll stop you there, in reference to the variance itself.
Just don't want them 10 feet closer for that reason.
Is there anything else that you'd like to share with the ZBA in reference to the variance?
That we don't want.
Okay, that's it, okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Okay. Dismissed?
Unless you have something else that you need to share, I'm sorry, thank you.
Guys up.
Yeah. Any other questions, concerns for the applicant? Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
I'm sorry.
We'll close that portion. Oh, is anyone here to speak for the variance? Okay, I've been the person applying. So for this particular hearing, I'll close this portion of the public hearing. There was no other information that needed to be requested from the ZBA members, correct? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion in reference to the variance 21756 NR 22? Request for relief for Article 4, Section 4.11?
I make a motion that be granted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and those that are in favor?
Beg your pardon, Madam Chair?
Yes.
For the discussion?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I think that we're making a mistake by approving this, let everybody know that, because looking at where the house is located and clearings that are around it, there is ample room to, to move this, so we have to use a setback, the front row, right here. So you could slide it right over here, process still stay within the original building setback. John, what do we allow, 10 feet to the well? Yeah, it's.
That was the reason why they didn't want to put it in front of you. Don't want to put a driveway and stuff there, you gotta drive around the well to get into the garage.
The septic is also.
This is the driveway coming up.
Impermeable pavement right here.
The septic and both on the.
You know, there's no, the only reason.
So when people, when people put something like this on their property, they have a right to expect to put it in a reasonable position in reasonable proximity. Look at, they are right. They could put it, which would avoid the well and also put this garage in reasonable proximity for the house.
Mm-hmm.
It'd just be creating another hardship for them, they never garage there.
The other side of the house you can't get out to.
What is their first hardship?
That's where the house is placed on their land.
The impermeable surface and where it sits in relation to where the house sits.
That's, that's not a hardship, though.
You want your garage at your driveway, and the driveway is already into the boundary, so.
Can I see that picture?
I think they're.
Elevation plan is down at the clerk has that.
Have it.
Do I have a comment? You're adding it, you're connecting the two buildings with this freestanding roof, right?
Is that the main entrance?
Is that roof there already?
No.
Okay. So an argument could be made that you can move the garage over and attach it to the house, eliminating or reducing the size of that covered area. But from my perspective, the elevation, and I'm looking at this, and I'm assuming, I don't know who drew this, let me ask you that, who drew this?
That was.
Somebody that's gonna build it?
Contract, by the contract.
Okay, so the elevations, I'm assuming, make sense.
Yes.
So that the floor of the garage is shown where it is, and the floor of the house, that's accurate, these different elevations. So if you put, I'm a builder by trade, if you put that garage too close to the house, you're gonna end up with that set of stairs right there inside the garage. That's gonna defeat the purpose of a two-car garage. So could you reduce that little roof? Yeah, I suppose, could you reduce it enough? You need 8.4 feet, that's what you're looking for, 8.4 feet. Your driveway is already legally in that 30-foot setback.
Correct.
And, and it's only, can you put in there? It's closer to the house than the edge of that existing pavement. So for me, it makes no difference that if that garage is three feet more towards the house or where they want to put it. Whoever built, did you build this house?
Yes.
You did.
I've been here 22 years.
Okay, so I won't ask the next question, why'd you put the house there?
Because of ledge.
Oh, ledge? There, I will ask it. All right, you hit ledge, so it shoved you over.
Exactly.
You guys should have mentioned that.
Yeah, because the ledge makes part of the hardship.
Yep.
Excellent.
And it's everyone.
Well, Barrington's ledge. I've learned, living here.
Any other? Yeah.
So, you know, I'm going to, my second, we haven't voted on the whole. I just don't see any reason not to give them 8.4 feet, feet, so they don't have stairs in the garage of that garage bed.
Understood, okay. Any other questions, concerns, or deliberation from the ZBA? Yes, sir?
Yes. Aesthetics, not part of what we're here to design, that's all I'm gonna say on that, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I think.
I know, but I wanted to.
Yep, so we have a first and a second, I'm gonna take a roll call vote, beginning at the end of the table.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
It pains me to have to say this, aye.
Aye.
It does, it really does, because.
And you didn't have to say it.
No, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting the chair.
So that's fine, I was going to say the motion's been made, seconded, it has been approved, the variance criteria has been met, and, yes, yep.
Say yes. But the point is, is that work of ledge is what makes it acceptable, because I've seen.
There you go, new information, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna open the next segment of our public hearing to review the application for relief, 23425 V 22, variance for Daniel and Melissa Ayers, requested by the applicant from Article 4, Section 411, Table 2, to a left step backs from the front setback from Meeting House Road to be 38 feet 6 inches, and the front setback on Oak Hill to be 37 feet 5 inches, where 40 is required, on a 1.85 acre lot to install a prefabricated garage, map 234 Lot 25, at 41 Oak Hill Road in the Village zoning. Please feel free to.
Sure.
Details for the setback variance.
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Christopher Bariffey, sensible member of Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing the Ayers here this evening. The Ayers purchased the house that was by Mike McMahon, the corner of Meeting House Road, and.
Can you just pick up, sir, please? Just a little bit, there's no microphone.
Oh, I apologize, I thought that's what that was.
Just a quarter.
So, the Ayers had purchased the home that was on the corner of Oak Road and Meeting House Road, that was by McMahon, a few years back. As some of you may know, we have developed a subdivision on Meeting House Road and redeveloped all of Meeting House Road from Oak Hill Road all the way through to Smoke Street. So this lot is on the corner of that intersection. The oddity of this lot is a number of things. There's a small wetland that drains through the back of the site, this wetland is, it is small, but it doesn't meet, it's not small enough to not require the 50-foot wetland setback, but for conditional use permit for the site. But most notably about this lot is when we developed Meeting House Road, we developed an innovative stormwater feature, and so we were able to capture all of the stormwater from Meeting House Road, as well as stormwater from Oak Hill Road, treat it in an enhanced bio-tension system that we, John, for the design, and then that's been discharged back to the wetlands at the rear of the site. At the time, we, working with the planning board, but also with the select board, we determined that that corner area where that pond is, this particular case, would be much better that were incorporated into the right-of-way Meeting House Road, not provide an easement on somebody's, and it's had to do with size of the ponds and the type of technology that's put into the pond. The planning board and the select board really wanted that area to be part of their road right-of-way, so that there was no question about access and maintenance and how to maintain it in the future. So, fast forward, the Ayers now own this lot, Mr. Ayers has informed me that the garage inside the house structure is 21 by 21, that officials know that that's inadequate, placing in a modest-sized truck, when consider stairs inside the house and a door that needs to close, and so he would like a prefabricated structure based on his lot. So, came to us to place this in an appropriate area, two things jumped out at me, first is, much like the previous case, there's a well that's sort of flunked right in the middle of the open sort of useful area, tillage, as some of us know it, in the front yard or the side yard, but more notably, because of the special condition of the property, that lot line that this is now adjacent to is considered a front, because this is technically now a corner lot, Barrington has two fronts, and that setback is no longer a side setback, it is a front setback of 40 feet. And so when you place both of those features on the site, and you place the small prefabricated garage structure on site, it extends inside both of the quote, "front setbacks" by a few feet. The size of the pad that we're showing is 21 by 31, that's kind of an odd size, but it has to do with how the pre-manufactured structure sits on a honched pad, and so the actual concrete pad will sit a little bit outside of where the structure sits. So the actual structure itself is closer to a 20 by 30-foot structure, that's why it's just sort of an odd, an odd feature, but I wanted to make sure that we incorporated all of the structural components of the structure itself. So, no questions pertaining to the, to the site, I'm happy to move through the five criteria of the variance.
I have a question, so before House Hill Road was built, designed and built?
Yes.
You had a side setback, now you have a front setback.
That's correct.
Vice Chair Bailey?
For the record, I want it to be known that I've used Berry Engineering in the last two years to accomplish some work for myself, but in no way will affect the way that I will vote tonight.
I will actually recuse myself, because I, till such time as I am no longer an executive director of a very wonderful nonprofit, I have received a beautiful gift from Berry Engineering, so are you comfortable with four voting members of ZBA making a decision?
I, I think we are, Madam. I, I think we are, Madam Chair. However, I just would like you to know that if that is perceived as a conflict, then likely I have a conflict with almost everybody in the room.
Oh.
And so, I don't just, your future, you know, deal to, but I don't view that as a conflict, and if, you know, the eventual no vote that I may receive from you, I don't consider that a conflict either.
Is, is everyone comfortable with that?
I am comfortable, 'cause I don't think you're gonna receive anything personally.
That is correct. That is correct. I will have no personal benefit to receive. Yes. So, yeah, he is a very nice human. Please move through the list, or the justification. Um, I'm gonna let the board vote. Do you feel that something associated with a gift to the business that I oversee, I'm very comfortable refusing myself with me being...
Bailey, no?
No.
Andre?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Um, okay. So, you have five voting members. Go ahead and please move through justification for variance.
So, the first I've pointed out in my memo is, the literal commencement creates an unnecessary hardship for the applicant based on the special conditions of the property. Clearly, demonstrated the special conditions and the oddity of the property. The unnecessary hardship here is, based on what you can see in the photographs, this man and his wife have a beautiful side area that they essentially cannot use for the purposes of an accessory structure. I think an accessory structure, though not a given right for residential users and developers, in many, many instances, I think certainly a use that many people in the town of Barrington and surrounding communities enjoy, and to be told that they cannot have a small, modest accessory structure, does pose an unnecessary hardship for a landowner who is burdened by two front setbacks. Granting the variance would be consistent with the ordinance, the spirit of the, or just in nature, I think, demonstrated by the photographs that we provided, that this does not harm that atmosphere whatsoever. And in fact, I didn't point out in my writing, this is nearly imperceptible, the amount of distance asking relief. The vertical separation between Oak Hill Road and the project site, the swell line in between, the stone wall in between, vegetation that resides along the roadway, this structure, no passerby will know that this structure is not 40 feet from either one of the codes. Granting the variance will not result in diminution of surrounding property values. Here again, this type of structure is permitted by right within the zone, underlying zone. We're not asking for a use, or a use of the structure that is inappropriate for the area, and therefore, no diminution of property values will be recognized. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, whereas it will allow these residents of the town of Barrington to productively use their land in a reasonable format, in what we've determined to be the most reasonable area in use of the property. Granting the variance would not be a trust, this case, trust is ensuring that we don't have overcrowding, that we don't have, uh, have uses in lots that are too close to one another. This case, as the distinct visual ability to view, I, stormwater ponds and the road, there's really no other, there's really no other special user in the area, and this will not create a visual effect that creates a, an overcrowding view of Meeting House Road.
Questions by the ZPA?
One comment, I think that's one more. Sounds awesome.
A lot of time went into that.
Can I ask what truck you drive that doesn't fit in a 21?
Sitting right outside, it's an F-150.
Okay.
My wife has a Toyota Tacoma, and that Bailey sits.
Ah, thank you.
So, Chris, you said that the pad for this picks out further than the actual building. The actual building is gonna be even less...
Right. So, there's a six-inch haunch. Some people know them as floating slabs, but I know it as a honched slab, so you pour the, the normal pad where you would set the structure, but the ridges haunch down into the ground. They're not set on frost balls, and that haunch sits wider than the structure does itself. So, there's another six to eight inches there that...
So, the structure's less than a foot on one side, and less than a foot and a half on the other.
That's correct.
Zoning regulations consist...
I know, you have to...
That's right.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, thank you. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? And is anyone here to, in opposition to the variance application? Okay. Seeing as there is none, I'll close this portion of this public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion in reference to the variance?
Take a motion that we accept it.
And a second from Vice Chair Bailey. Could I have a roll call vote, beginning at the end of the table? Mr. Chris?
Aye.
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Article five.
Thank you for...
Before I open the next public hearing for an application that's to come before us, we received something that was handed to us today in reference to the proposed construction plot plan, which means that, at the time, the application was incomplete. Would you be willing to accept what has been submitted today?
We're talking, we're talking about, yeah, the surveys that came...
No, there should be on the schedule.
They just, they just...
I wasn't, I was...
So...
There should be some extras on the desk. If not, I have...
So...
Just one here.
So, I'm going to ask the board to allow...
All choice.
Yes. So, you had an incomplete packet, you now have a complete packet. Are you comfortable proceeding tonight?
All aye.
Okay. And, and I would as well vote in favor of that. Thank you. So, opening up the public hearing for application 10364GR22, variance for relief requested by EOR Realty Development LLC, request from the applicant for a variance to Article 4, Section 4.11, Table 2, to allow setbacks from the right side to be 12 feet, and on the left side to be 22 feet, where 30 feet is required for the colonial, 24 feet by 32 feet, on a .3 acre lot on Long Shore, in the general residential zoning district. Does someone who'd like to testify in support of the variance?
That's the applicant. If you're just giving me, if you are on, online for this application, you may raise your hand if you cannot unmute yourself, otherwise press star six. If you're on the phone, the phone's... I have several guests on here, so I'm not sure who's able to...
The applicant on the screen.
That's our attorney.
Well, that's our attorney.
That's Laura. You do have several...
The individual, do we have a phone here? Who's got a phone?
I have a phone, myself.
Yeah, I'm not sure I wanna publish my number. I don't get to... Oh, I was gonna say, so, if the applicant is watching the meeting for the public hearing for 10364GR22VAR for EOR Realty Development LLC, if you take your mouse and you mouse over the front of your screen, you will find, I think I see a hand raised right there, I think, with a little bluish person? You see what I'm seeing? Up on your screen, the second down below you, Vanessa, there's a blue individual. There's no name.
Oh, that they're on the phone, no.
Oh, they are. Okay.
It's star six, we can hear you.
This is a... You got the number?
Okay. What's the number? No?
Area code 63, 953, 956.
So, yep. So, so the next opportunity to participate remotely will be to call on 603-953-5956, and indicate to us that you're actually on the meeting, ready to present. And I'll give that exactly 90 seconds.
Give me 90 seconds.
Hello?
Hi there. Are you the applicant for...
This is... EOR Realty Development.
Thank you. Okay. I'm glad we gave you the chance to get onto the meeting.
We were, we've been trying, we've been sitting at the computer, and we just, you couldn't hear us.
Okay. So, is, understanding that you're seeking relief from the zoning ordinance listed, Article 4, Section 411, Table 2, for allowance of setbacks from the right side to be 12 feet and left side to be 22 feet, where 30 feet is required, to build this two-story colonial 24 by 32 on a .3 acre lot on Long Shores in the general residential zoning district, please feel free to testify in support of the variance.
Okay. Thank you. What we're trying to do is, there's a, I purchased this lot from a family member that would, they got a variance, March 16th of 2022, and they had a variance for a manufactured home, single-wide, and I'd like to convert it to a 24 by 32 colonial stick-built home.
Would you like to testify as to the justification for the variance requested?
I, I mean, I'm just trying to amend the variance that I have.
Read off those five criteria.
So, you have, you have five criteria that you completed on your application. Looks like it's page four. Would you please list those, beginning with special conditions exist?
Okay. Okay. So, for number one, literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause a hardship, because I would have a piece of land that was unbuildable. Granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, because I would be building a single-family home, which is consistent with the neighborhood. The variance would not diminish property values in the area, because it would be improving the property with a brand-new home. The variance would do substantial justice, because I could build a home on my land and improve the neighborhood. And the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because it would be improving the neighborhood values and provide necessary additional housing.
The staff.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas this board issue, I remember that coming up, and it was a narrow mobile home.
Yes.
And that was approved.
Correct.
So, it's okay, apparently it's okay, since you guys are seeing this and are not objecting, to come back and, and ask for a second variance to have more setbacks.
They are changing, so, from their original application to now they're changing the size of the house. So, before it was like a modular, completely was a mobile home. Manufactured home, and now, simple home. So, it, the footprint is changing, so it's...
If they built this house, it wouldn't conform to the variance that was already approved?
Understood.
So, that's why I told them that I couldn't approve it, but there was justification for them to come back to you. Feel that it works on this lot, that's your decision in support?
I mentioned to the applicant, you said your number-one hardship is that you would not be able to build a home if you did not receive this variance. What I think is more accurate is, you would not be able to construct a stick-built home on this lot if you don't receive this variance. That makes sense to anybody? That, that fair enough?
I'll go and see...
The square footage of the manufactured home that was approved was how many square feet?
Um, manufactured home was, I believe it was 12, 12, 14 by 60?
It was 896 square feet.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, is there a reason why the home isn't centered on the lot, why it has a wider, I see, looking at the pen, it looks like the 22-point setback is on the side where there's a dwelling.
Did you hear the question that was presented by ZPA member?
I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question.
She's asking why the home is positioned more to the left of the center of the lot than it is to the actual center of the lot?
Just 'cause it lay out kinda nice on the rock, 'cause on the right side, the elevations are a little bit higher, on the left side, they drop off. So, we're trying to stay on original ground on the right side, footing.
And the new vari, the, the variance you're requesting, the square footage of this new home would be what?
Um, no, first one, 14 by 32. Like 1500, 1600 square feet? That includes a garage.
36. 32, 1536.
1536, okay.
Pretty modest.
On the plot plan provided to, facing the front of the dwelling, there's a small square from the neighbor's property to the left side, in between the existing dwelling on the neighbor, neighbor's property and this dwelling. What is that little box?
I, I, I don't know, ma'am, I'm sorry. I think it's a shed for the, to the lot to the left of ours. To the west, from the, to the west, it would actually be.
Okay.
It's, that's not ours. But I'm thinking it's a shed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it is, it is, it is a shed. I'm looking at the subject design, and the designer noted it, it was a shed.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, Vice Chair Bailey.
You just presented us today with a proposed construction plan dated July 20th, we received it, and it was by Realty Development LLC. So, if I've described it to any... So if I've described it any further, I'm just looking at the drawing and there seems to be, in my opinion, a lack of information on the drawing as to how far we are back from having it, so that the setbacks aren't taken care of on the other side, so. I for one would like some more information from you, sir, do you have another drawing that, that shows it all?
Do you mean setbacks from the shed or the existing dwelling next door?
The new, the new dwelling is fifty-something feet off the road, twenty-two feet from the west side, thirteen point nine to the right.
See.
And I don't know where the shed is, it's not on my property.
But, but, but what would happen if we reversed it, turned around a bit? We had setbacks, then we can cover, just cover the carpet, set the system, make the house fit, still have what they still.
Look at the elevation page.
Staff, what is the setback from Longshore?
Thirty, thirty on the sideline.
No, who's talking, the front setback, what he was asking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And his plan showing sixty-two point six four, right? Do we meet front?
He meets the front setback, he's asking to leave for the two sides.
Right, okay.
Just the two sides we don't need.
So, I, I would like to comment that if the property was actually the proposed new dwelling further to the back of the property, there's twenty additional feet of width along the back there. And Leach Field moved to the front, seems to allow for a much more substantial setback to the sides.
Eight seventy-five feet of separation from the well to the septic, and this plan shows the well in the front.
Oh, it's already there? It's an existing well?
I believe so, am I right about that, staff? The well is existing?
You'll have to ask the applicant. No, it's not a, it's a proposed well.
It's a proposed well.
Go back further on the line, drops off substantially.
That's why you
That's why we kept it on the front.
So would require like a walkout basement?
Do you have a, do you have a Leach Field designed?
Yes, it's already approved, Tobin Farwell designed it. That was the original variance back in March sixteenth twenty-two. When she went for the variance, the nature said, the decision was the board, the applicant did not need a variance.
It's on the topo here, from the front of the house, the back of the house drops eight feet already.
Yeah, I see that.
So if you go back more, it's going to get even worse.
Yeah, it's, and it, and this is a, this is a frostballed home, slab on grade. No basement.
So at this point, you're gravity draining into the septic from the opposed side?
Exactly, everything, everything works.
If you reverse it, you're going to be pumping it.
Correct.
Questions, comments?
The further you go ahead, the more, the more veg there is.
Oh. There anything else you'd like to present before we move to anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the app, application?
That's what I can think of.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak in reference to an opposition to this variance and testify? Anyone online would like to speak, opposition to this variance? The phone number you could call is six zero three, nine five three, five nine five six to let us know that you would like to testify. Yes, or star six, it does take a minute when you hit star six, you have to pause for about fifteen seconds and then it, it will then speak. Oh, thank you, sorry, oh, we'll see if somebody calls. Nothing? Okay, I just have one more quick question, is there a reason when presented back in March that the idea for the two-level stick-built home did not come before the Z B A? At that time?
Yes, it was a different owner, I purchased this from a family member, there was, my cousin Leon passed away.
Uh huh, I'm sorry.
I purchased it from him and Cindy, and I don't, you know, I would rather build a stick-built home than a, than a manufacturing home.
Yep, is this to be your primary residence?
No.
Ah, okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Would anyone like to make a motion in reference to the variance one oh three sixty-four G R twenty-two?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Two, like you called out the case number here?
Sure.
Case number one zero three dash six four. Dash G I dash two two. Can we approve the variance with a side setback to thirteen point one nine feet and two-two point six zero feet on the west as submitted by the applicant?
We have a second. Could I please have a roll call vote?
I.
No.
I have to agree with Vice Chair Bailey, I feel like the twelve feet from the left side is just far too close to the other property. However, with a vote of three to two, the variance is accepted.
Great, thank you.
It's eighteen feet difference, now, now we're, we're close on this case.
So.
Eighteen feet difference.
So, we've deliberated, we've closed this portion of the public hearing, and I think the next thing in front of it is an appeal to a prior decision. Am I correct on this?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so.
This case is closed?
Case is closed, we'll be opening a public hearing in reference to appeal of a decision.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
This is actually a request for rehearing, this is not a public hearing at this point, the board is to consider whether or not to grant the rehearing.
Very good, whether to grant a rehearing.
If the board believes it aired in any way.
Very good. So, let's just, let's discuss that after, Vice Chair Bailey, if we could, so, at this time, would the board, does, does the board feel that there is any justification to grant a rehearing to case one one five one one G R twenty-two from last month? Yes, sir?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, I'd like to speak on this request, the request is asking us to make a, to read this, it, they are requesting a rehearing of the requirement and information related to road improvements and dimensions of the whole cottage lane. Right now, that is, there's nothing been out of planning board for approval. We're being asked to approve something that doesn't even exist, so I think that we, we should not comment on this except for the fact that this is not a, I can't think of the correct phrase, but we're asked to make a decision on something that doesn't exist.
Okay, so, so we're asked to rehear if we feel that the Z B A aired in its original hearing decision, and does anyone on the board feel the need to rehear based on an error in the original decision?
I do not.
So, do I have a motion to rehear, and if I do not, then we will not be rehearing? At this time, I do not hear and we will not be entertaining a motion to rehear one one five one one G R twenty-two, Z B A. And I think your next order of business, folks, is to review and approve your meeting minutes from your June fifteenth meeting. After reviewing them, I did not find that there was an error in reference to the meeting minutes, does anyone have any changes, questions, concerns in reference to? Oh, Vice Chair Bailey's name was spelled, spelled correctly, so he's comfortable with the meeting minutes, thank you, Vice Chair Bailey. If you've read them and are comfortable and anyone would like to make a motion to accept the June fifteenth zoning board of adjustment minutes, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the zoning.
And I have a second from Mrs. Tuckins, and so roll call vote, please, beginning at the end of the table, Andre?
Aye. Bailey, aye.
Aye. Will be accepted and entered. Okay, next up, for the zoning board of adjustments, which is just riveting and exciting, is the changes to the rules of procedure. The bylaws for the Z B A were last updated in nineteen ninety-two. Our town planner has reviewed the current rules of procedure as well as some recommended updates, and you've all been given materials to review and make any other suggested changes to the draft. Unfortunately, the document prints page ten of fifteen on each page, I'm not sure why. But that's okay, so I'm going to count because one, two, three.
Do you like different?
Four, five, six, seven. On page eight, so on page eight at the top, there is a paragraph that reads, any such, and this is at the drafted rule procedure, any such notice shall direct interested perspective alternate members to submit a letter of interest to the board chairperson. I think, I personally feel we could say, instead of a letter of interest, an emailed correspondence expressing interest, is that okay?
Some people don't have computers.
Well, I could say one or the other, go ahead. So, this would be, yes, okay, okay? So. So, it's, art three. Any such.
On the, I have it says six out of fifteen, perhaps?
Six out of fifteen on the front. I printed a large document that just falls into this, so.
Easier to read than.
Yes. So, my only suggestion here would be that it reads, provide a letter of interest or an emailed letter of interest, is that okay with everyone?
I, I've got to catch up to you, I'm sorry, you're on your page eight.
Go ahead.
Six, six out of fifteen.
Okay, sorry.
Looking at the one that Barbara filled out. Or you could have printed it out that way.
Can, can, can we go with staff from the beginning?
So, if you had changes that you wanted to recommend from the beginning?
I, I would, I would like to make some changes.
Okay.
Okay, first change is the, the all pages should be numbered.
Yep.
Now we get over to using the page numbers on the bottom, we go to page number six of.
Yes, you can keep it.
Six. Six of fifteen.
Yep.
Second paragraph I had, where it says up there, where it says, following discussion, the board will vote whether to recommend the person for the alternate position. And I think that the word whether should be removed and should vote to recommend. Yeah, I see it now, yeah.
You're not necessarily voting to recommend.
Thank you.
So, so this is the select board as well, this isn't us.
Very well.
So this is, would, this would be when a packet goes in front of the select board.
All right, and then go down to the next page, I mean, down further to Article four.
Yep.
On the first paragraph, and it says generally be held at town hall, I just wanted to insert the word the town hall, that's up, matter of perhaps however you want to do it.
Okay, can I go to the top paragraph here, and that's where the email was going to be inserted?
Yes, ma'am. I'll put the email right there.
I just want to go page by page, does anyone up until this point have any other suggested changes? I'm going for ease of time. Okay, yes.
After, send a letter or email.
Yes.
Email to land use office.
Sure. And below your the town hall, the other thing is, are we required to post at the Barrington Post Office?
Yes.
We are, okay, I was, that was just a question I had, okay, go ahead.
Wait, wait, wait. Two public places.
Two public places, and the post office seems convenient, that's fine, go ahead, George.
Thank you very much, and then, and then while I'm asking here is, it said, talking about mail, sending the packets out, something that I'd like to consider is, should the packets be sent to the alternates? Because in, in this new form that we're asked, asked to do, we're asking the alternates to sit in in the case of, of somebody not being there.
So, so alternates and traditional members would receive packets, do we need to list that? Is that what you're saying, George?
Yes, I am.
Spell it out?
I would like to see that added here, it talks about the delivery of packets in here.
Where are you doing?
I'm trying to get there, I really am. The, let's see, it says. Service of all.
I think that's further ahead in the packet, to be honest with you.
Nope, I wrote it right next to it when I was reading it. Yeah, because it talks about.
Are we going to be in the new building, staff, next month?
We hope.
No.
No, we are.
No.
No.
Can we turn that fan, can't, makes too much noise, how in the hell are you?
It is, it's very warm.
If you want to swing around the front, I'll turn the fan on, you guys will be all close enough, you can hear each other talk. We can just move our chairs up here?
That, that's, I like.
That's a consideration.
So, well, make sure that you're captured on the video.
This is a, we're in public?
Yeah, we're in public.
It was still in public discussion, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we can turn the fan on.
So, George, from what I'm understanding, just to make this easier, you'd write on the very front page, ensure that packets are received by traditional and alternate members, and insert that where it needs to go, okay, what else you got, sir?
You are just a person I need to have with me, and then over here.
I'm melting.
I have changes on page seven.
Page seven.
Page seven. Where you're talking about notice, I would suggest that you also identify the individual notice from the statute that needs to be sent to the applicant and the butters and the holders of easements. I would.
Are you looking at the same where it says ninety-one dash A two and then Roman numeral two? Is that the paragraph you're speaking of, Laura?
I believe the very top of page seven where it says notice shall be posted in the town hall, library, Barrington Post Office.
Yep.
Add a number three.
Oh, add a number three, yep.
And do the individualized notice that's required by the statute. And I can send you specific language.
Okay, we'll insert that.
I would remove everything but the first sentence in paragraph D, because ninety-one A might change, and there's no reason to have the statute quoted in there.
Okay, remove everything here?
I'll, I'll send you changes.
Okay, cha, I'm going to draw a line through this and write, legal changes pending.
Yes.
Okay.
I put this note on this page, though it doesn't necessarily have to go here, in your rules of procedure, you should discuss how you want alternates to participate, whether you want them to participate in the public hearing process or not, and what you want them to do once you close the public hearing, and there should also be something in here about the electronic participation of members who can't physically be there. And I can give you language for that, too.
Electronic and alternate participation. So, it's my understanding that at the beginning of the meetings, when we are deciding to move an alternate to a regular board member, at that time, they're participating under the same bylaws that we would be participating under. So what are you suggesting we include in there, because further on in the document, once we've assigned them that role as a regular voting, okay, why?
If you have alternates who are attending the meeting but aren't voting members.
Oh, yes, okay.
They can participate as well under the statute if you identify the situation under which they can participate. under which they can participate, so I can give you some suggested language for that.
So what I'm understanding is if they wanna ask questions, so that they can help clarify, okay, understood.
Really sort of learn how to be a board member.
Yep, excellent, good.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Vice Chair Bailey.
Thank you very much. On the, on the page numbered eight of 15, if you'll find step one, go to the second sentence, and where it says here, "Assume the applicant to properly before," I think the word "presented" should be there.
Can I say?
Right here, see right here, I want you to put the word "presented" right in there. I want you to add the word "presented," because.
Each item on the checklist, what shall, I'm not sure, where do you want it presented?
Presented right there after "properly."
To ensure that the application is properly presented before the board, okay, gotcha.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we go over to page nine of.
Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I apologize. I know that we were kind of talking, before we get too far ahead. Page eight, when it's talked, or at the bottom of page seven, it's for the order of business.
Yes.
Is that the order of business that we like to do? It was drafted, highlighted in red.
Yep. Is that how we operated tonight?
Yes, it is.
I believe, all public hearing minutes.
Yep.
Unfinished business, new business.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that is still.
Yep, excellent.
That would be okay, good, thank you, Bailey.
Okay, where, where are you at now?
Okay, I'm up here now on page.
Anyone else have any material that they want to change, amend, or insert to these bylaws?
And do you wanna do this checklist? Is a checklist.
Right, I assume, so the only thing I will say is, I have only sat through these meetings, and I've already seen two applications that were incomplete, and people had to. I don't think that's a ZBA thing, I would like to see it firsthand, I think it makes it helpful to look at it, so.
Here's the thing about complete applications.
Yes.
There's no such thing in ZBA world, right?
Okay.
You can identify the information you wanna see in your application, but there's no such thing as a complete application in ZBA world, that's over in planning board world. Ideally, staff will review these applications when they come in, and say, "Yes, all the information the board generally likes to see, which are set forth in our rules of procedure, are here, you're good to go." Or, "Hey, you're missing a proper signature on the application, and I need you to sign it." Now, ideally, the applicant would fix that problem, but if the applicant says, "Go pound sand, I'm not signing it, and I still want you to submit it to the board," staff has to do that, staff doesn't have any ability to reject it. So I would encourage you to have a checklist in your rules of procedure of what you wanna see in your application, but keep in mind that staff can review it till the cows come home, if people say, "I wanna go to the board," they're coming to the board.
Okay.
And the only other thing I would note on here is, there's throughout, in a couple places in the rules of procedure, it says that the board can allow amendments at the hearing.
Yep.
You wanna be very, very careful about that, because some amendments are permissible at the hearing, others require new notice. So, for example, if someone has applied for a special exception, but actually needs a variance, you can't just change that on the fly, because the variance is like more relief than a special exception. But if someone has applied for a variance, and turns out they only need a special exception, that's an acceptable change, because it's less relief. So you just, you wanna be careful about amendments at meetings.
Gotcha.
Can't amend up, you can amend down.
Right.
Are you gonna talk about sidewalks?
I haven't got that far yet.
Okay.
My, my next piece, ladies and gentlemen, is on page nine, nine of 15 is numbered, that's under the number step five.
Yep.
The end of the second sentence, where it says, "Required to state his or her name and why they're there, I would like the word address also from the applicant to be stated at that time." That's what I like to add in, it'll be right here, see that?
So step five, name and address.
Yeah.
Address, where they live, or the address of the property, I mean, question.
Address where they live.
Where they live.
Yeah, it would be, because that's, what she's doing is, they're stepping before us to talk.
Okay, so, there's gonna be a big discussion about this, do you feel that the sidewalks are necessary?
Before we hit the sidewalks?
Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Reopening the public hearing after you've closed it, again, you wanna be very, very careful about doing that, because if people have left the meeting after you've closed it, and you reopen it, you're depriving them of due process, so you want to.
So I have a quick question in reference to that, Laura.
Yeah.
If you're listing, "I'm opening a public hearing for this variance, I'm opening a public hearing for this variance, I'm closing, I'm opening for this," that's appropriate, so that you're finishing each one, correct?
Right, yeah.
Like I did that tonight.
Yeah, you did, you guys did great tonight, by the way, I meant to tell you that.
Okay, thank you, I had your script next to me, so yeah, that's off to you, I won't take credit.
But what I don't want you guys to do is to close the public hearing, start deliberating, realize you have questions, and reopen the public hearing, and step six suggests that you can do that, and you can't do that.
Okay, so let's go through this, "The chair shall close the public hearing, following which the board shall deliberate, no further testimony is taken, subject to chairperson allowing, same, only under exceptional circumstances are allowing board members." Gotcha, okay.
Okay.
So the only time I could think that you would reopen this is, say, in a virtual world, we lost that person, in the middle of their, you know, their wifi went down, then we would reopen for purposes of a failed wifi communication.
Sure, yeah, that would be fun.
Gotcha, okay, makes sense. Sidewalks, you guys don't love them, let's talk about it.
If we go, if we're in the middle of a meeting, we decide we need a sidewalk, we wanna leave then and go do it, can we pause the meeting? We'd have to close. You have to, you'll have to properly notice the sidewalk, because that is a public meeting, so it has to be all under the proper, proper.
I wouldn't think in the middle of your meeting, you'd just drive out to the site.
Right, we'd do a continuance, and we would then set up a sidewalk, so if what we're looking at is so confusing, and we can't overlay the, what's it called, GIS mapping? Then, then we would say, "We absolutely need to go see this, we're going to continue your request for variance, and create a sidewalk for next meeting." I, I think.
And other people also do it sometimes before answers.
So we need language for that, that says.
I can do that.
When deemed necessary. And that's, right? Okay.
So instead of, on every new application.
Right, no, just when deemed necessary.
By.
By ZBA.
Majority of the board.
By the majority of the board.
I really like your second paragraph here, though.
Yeah. Yeah, don't talk. You're holding a meeting, don't talk, walk, look, don't talk, that's what it should say. Okay, so I like that better, instead of doing this for everyone, because I can tell you, like, looking at the overlay of the very first case we heard tonight, in my humble opinion, and it's only one person, I wouldn't have needed a sidewalk, it was very clear from the overlay that we saw, okay. I, I think we can all agree, if we get to 11:00 PM, that we're toast, and we're waiting, okay.
Is that what?
Okay.
That's what it says, 11:00 PM, we're not, yeah, what, you want 10, you want eight, you want nine?
I was toast at 10:00 last night.
Okay, so 9:00 PM? Nine.
How about 7:30?
I think it would, wouldn't it?
9:30 PM. Two and a half hours is good, after that, no meeting is productive, are you guys good with 9:30? Okay.
Let's see, I'm outside.
I know, I hear you, okay.
Hours.
Okay.
So if there are three or more, so it also says, "Or if there are three or more cases presented to the board one evening, all cases may be discussed and decided on the following third, also Thursday, at Wednesday," do we use that, or no? Just, or we could strike all that, because.
We're gonna strike all that.
Today, we had more than three cases, technically.
Yeah, we're fine, we work, we work pretty fast and efficiently, so.
You have all this.
We're gonna have 9:30.
9:30.
9:30. I'll bring you coffee if I think the meeting's going to 9:30, Vice Chair Bailey, you'll get a nice cup of caffeine. Applications for appeal. How did we handle that tonight, by the way? I think that we were, I think we were correct in our response to that appeal.
I think you were requ, I, I think we need to get our terminology right, so technically, any application that comes to you, variance, special exception, they're all technically appeals, right? Because they used to be, you used to have to get your building permit denied, and then appeal to you, so, an appeal is any application you get. What you had tonight was a motion for rehearing, which is different. I agree with you, you properly denied it, what I would like you to do is actually take the motion to deny it, if you're not gonna grant it. So I move that we not grant.
So vote on a motion to deny.
Yes, yeah.
Don't do it by exception, do it by a motion, okay, gotcha.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So I'm, I'm used to the select board, where if nobody makes a motion, there's no action, but I get you, and I respect what you're saying, and I will think that happens next time. Okay, what do you got, George?
On page 11 of 15, somewhere in the neighborhood of D, we're talking about returning money to the applicants and what have you.
Yes.
And it says, mailing fees should not, I put on here, because I was reading it, mailing fees should not be returned, or other expenditures that we had, in the case when the person cancels out and goes, I think that should be noted, or next meeting, which.
That's noted in S. Under waiver, so you're right, and it's noted in F.
Okay, and then I have on there, or next meeting, whichever is closer.
Yep.
Okay, so you got that on there.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I like, oh, here we go.
Chair, Madam Chair, I do have a question, so currently, I've been talking with the town administrator in general, not just for D, also the planning board, about adjusting fees.
Yes.
I don't know if this is a question for Laura, too, do we have to put what our current fees are in this? Because they probably will be changing, because we're under, everywhere else around us charges two to three times more than what we charge.
Okay.
And just to let you know.
Does that mean you should change your fees?
No, I understand that, but that, so we looked at that, well, why is that? And to put a notice in the paper, it costs over $200. We charge $75, and then 150 for the application fee. A lot of what I've gotten back, feedback from other towns, like, I talked to Lee and Rochester, and looked up Dover, they put all of their, that kind of fee into their application fee, versus having a separate, like, $75 filing fee, and, so that way, they put staff time, as well as the notice, because it's required to be noticed in the paper, we cannot.
What's Rochester and Dover charging for an application fee?
I can look it up online.
But while you're looking that up, let me answer your question, yes, your fees need to be in here, and something you should be aware of is that the House, or the legislature passed, and the governor signed House Bill 1661, which has all sorts of fun little nuggets in it, one of which is that you have to always post your fees, and if you don't post them, people don't have to pay them.
Okay, okay. What does Concord charge for the application fee for ZBA variance?
I have no idea.
Okay. So is the board comfortable with us determining the 150 plus what it actually costs us to place this in the wired newspaper?
You should absolutely be covering your costs.
Yep, we need to cover our costs.
So I think I need to, I don't, I'll have to talk to Connor on like, how we proposed it, because he told me to get research, and then talk with the board, and then he has to go select board, so I don't know, maybe Laura can better give advice, the legal advice for that.
So it's gotta go to the select board to determine these fees?
And I don't know.
I mean, usually.
I don't know that.
I would work with the select board to make sure that the town's costs are being covered, and then I would put them in the rules of procedure, and I'd have the selectmen adopt them, too.
Okay, so at this time, as we're about to consider adopting these, do we agree as a collective group that our fees and costs should be met? Okay, so, and that the town planner will determine those, and it will go through the select board, and whatever that is determined to be would be updated to the bylaws?
Well, it's 5% of Vanessa's salary and job, too.
Okay.
So.
I don't want my taxes.
I looked up at Rochester for fees.
Yes.
For zoning board of adjustment fees. They separated out by several different things, but they charged 175 for their application.
Plus review, 300.
Plus review.
Plus fee, yeah, it's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds.
Right.
Okay, so, so we're comfortable.
Money-making endeavor, this is a cover-up cost thing.
Gotcha, so, so we're comfortable as a board letting our town planner determine, so that we're not collecting more than what the actual cost.
Yeah, right now, it is 100, $150 application fee, plus 75, plus a butter fee, and I, Madam Chair, I know that you had asked on it previously, how like, why is it the actual cost? It also is part of, I'm not sure how they calculate it, but I know it's part of like staff time for her to prepare the mailing.
Sure.
It's not just the cost of the postage as well.
Absolutely, okay, sounds good.
Seven dollars is that.
Seven dollars is that amount.
Seems to be the going rate.
Okay, gotcha, anything else, George, go ahead.
I'm not trying to be a pain in the neck.
Nobody feels you being a pain.
Oh, on page 12 of 15, the second paragraph, where it talks about, "The clerk shall complete the written procedure," I'd like to change that to 168 hours.
How about five days, which is what the statute says?
Five days.
Five business days.
All right.
People try and do the new math.
And by five days?
Hundred.
Laura, I assume that's five business days, working weekdays.
Yep.
Or non-holidays, gotcha, okay.
Okay, thank you.
What else you got?
Okay, down the bottom, I wrote, on the last column, third line, where it says, "Reasonable time shall be 30 days," and I, unless others specify, this is additional requirements related to application of appeal, and so we have 30 days, and so, so we put the word "calendar days" in there, because some people can say, "Well, that's workdays," some people can comply, well, it says 30 days, it doesn't say whether it's calendar days or working days.
It's calendar days, you can put it in there if you want.
Calendar days, if you want, okay.
I have other changes on this page as well.
Go ahead.
For paragraph I, waiver procedures, we need a standard other than it can't be illegal, and I can help you come up with that. And also, House Bill 1661 now requires that whenever you make a decision, you have to make specific written findings that support the decision, if you don't do that in terms of a denial, it's an automatic reversal, and there's a new shot clock, so that now you have 90 days to act on an application, just like the planning board has that amount of time. So I will give Vanessa some language to add in here for that bill.
Okay, so I and J, you're gonna send appropriate legal verbiage.
I am.
Okay. Got it? Anything else?
Yes, please, on 13 of 15, I, and I don't know why I did it, it says, "Joint meeting and hearings." I'm perplexed on this one here, in addition to board.
So this would be, like, say, the property is half on Strafford and half on our property, correct?
It's actually, for example, if they need a variance and site plan approval, and it's a really complicated application, the planning board and the zoning board can have a joint meeting, and the applicant can make one presentation, answer all of your questions, and then each board takes its own vote.
What if we don't wanna do that?
You don't have to do that.
So can we just get rid of this section? Because quite frankly, I can't see how we'd pull together.
The RSA is there.
No, seriously.
The RSA is there that authorizes that you don't need it in your rules of procedure.
Okay, so we just leave it there, but we don't have to use it?
Yeah.
I like that, okay, next page.
Thank you very much, I'm done.
And the only other thing I had was, under members' participation and training, where where it says incur admission fee, I think also or mileage expense should be added, like reimbursement of mileage expense.
Um, Madam Chair, if I may, I have asked this, from my own knowledge, if there were members that wanted to do training.
Yes.
You just need to check with my department. I can lobby for that training.
Yes.
Or there's, so as a side note, too, if there's things that you feel like next year you may want to do, we can talk about that offline, but like, let me know, and that way I can put it in my budget as well, so that way we can be reimbursed.
I would love to take the level one GIS course. You can put it in, so the select board decides.
Give it to me.
I think they're doing a day-long training in October that you should all attend if you can.
A day-long training in October?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get you the appointment. You'll have the lurid tones of Laura Specter Morgan.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, we used to go.
Okay.
It's a lot of those.
I want to take GI, I want to know how to look at things. Okay. So the only other thing I had was under the multiple applications fee, where for some reason it's still listing two fifty for traditional butter over ten. I think it should be possible to actually certify the mails. Do you guys agree with that?
Yes. Can we settle it by saying that just all fees?
Adjust all fees.
Yeah.
For certified mail of all kinds, basically, to be what it actually costs to process, or the seven dollars. Why would it be two fifty, twenty-five, what it?
I took this, I, this is from Wakefield, so I did not get that far. I apologize.
So let's change this to seventy for ten and an additional seven for each one over that.
So this whole section, this whole section needs to be adjusted. I'll talk to Vanessa about it.
Okay, I'm going to leave it for you. Okay. So, any other? The board's mail.
We don't, we accept everything from our land use department.
Okay, so this needs to be like updated. Okay, so I assume, because we've got to make some legal changes, thank you, Laura, for being the voice of what is legal when it comes to ZBA, because lord knows what we have in here. We will present this for adoption at the August meeting, everyone.
Okay.
We all melt and look like a little puddle of water in this room. It's like ninety-five degrees in here.
I bet.
I agree.
Yeah.
Then it, well, okay, if we do that, September, October, November, December is when it would actually go into effect. I'm fine with that.
Are we going to meet, are we going to meet in December? Because the kids are out of school that week, and everybody travels, travels to Grandma and Grandpa.
Probably not.
I think the meeting's on the twenty-first of December.
I'm comfortable meeting during the week of Christmas, but.
You need the break to get out of the house. I know that.
I don't, I don't. So, um, so at this point, our legal language will get sent to us. The draft will read it and review it, adopt it at September. I, I don't really. I think we can, I feel comfortable that if our, if our legal representative is saying, this is what you need, it's what we need. So I, I'd be comfortable voting on the amended rules of procedure next, next meeting, yeah.
And then it goes to the fact sixty days after that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that would be easy, though.
Yeah, no, we've already said she'll set the.
Right, but the right.
Review to report.
Oh.
Take it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Everyone go home and get cool.
What?
Everyone go home and cool off.
I know. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call.
Bailey, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.